I'd like to call the October 10th meeting, uh, excuse me, start over. I'd like to call the October 10th, 2019 meeting of the Carver School Committee to order. Could you please stand for the pledge? The pledge is...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, any recognitions for us?
Yeah, we're gonna start this evening with a few recognitions. First, I'd like to invite up Madeline Valancourt, a sixth grade student at Carver Middle High School. Madeline, come right up to the... And we wanted this, as a school district, we'd like to recognize Madeline for her generosity. So she made an individual decision last year to take, basically, I don't know if the right word is proceeds, but donate everything she got from her birthday party to the walking running path at the elementary school that we're planning on building. So in total, she made a donation of over $200 directly to the walking path and the running path. And then also, I believe, included a donation to the Carver Food Pantry as well, and Shane Gives Thanks. So she, we just thought that was a great civic action for her to take in terms of recognizing some of the needs in the community, both with the food pantry and then also with the walking running path. And as a committee, I thought it would be nice to recognize Madeline for her efforts. And Madeline, the only question I'll ask you is, what led to this decision? What made you decide to do this?
I decided to donate to the running path because I really liked fitness and running. And I donated to the Shane Gives Thanks because I know there are people out there that don't have food, and I thought they'd be hungry, so I donated.
And like I said, we just wanted to take a couple minutes to recognize Madeline for her civic, her civic thinking and making these donations. So Madeline, come on up. We have a recognition for you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thanks for doing that.
Congratulations.
Shake your hand. Oh, you need to shake your hand.
That's fine.
For us to shake our hands.
That was great.
Thank you.
That's great. Very good. We have them. And Madeline, if you want to stay, you can go back to your seat, but just to kind of give an update on the walking and running path. So the Carver Educational Foundation has been raising money from different avenues. And right now, we're actually at around $50,000. So we're beginning to seek out some information from contractors to look at finishing that project, or actually starting that project. We couldn't, we couldn't begin that project until we had taken ownership of the fields. So we've discussed this at the last couple of meetings. Technically, in terms of the fields outside at the elementary school, we're still in phase two. They're still owned by Central Nurseries, and they're in charge of maintaining those fields through November 15th, and then officially turn it over to us if, I think we actually discussed this at our last meeting. So our thought process is in the spring of this year, we're gonna actually begin to look to see how we can invest that $50,000 to build that walking running path. And our goal would be, hopefully, you know, a timeframe would be maybe, maybe this year or next time, if not the next spring, that the walking running path would be completed, and Madeline and her family would have the opportunity to come and take a walk or go for a run on that path. So Madeline, again, thank you for your generous donation.
Thank you.
Before we move on from that, Scott, how would, if someone else wants to donate to the walking path, how would they...
Anyone who wanted to make a donation to the walking running path could just actually make a check out to the Carver Educational Foundation. They could send that check to the, to the, to the school department. We would be able to process, we'd be able to turn that over to the Educational Foundation. The Educational Foundation does have a P.O. box address. I just don't know it off the top of my head. We could put that information, people out there if they wanted to actually write a check and send it to the, mail it to the Carver Educational Foundation. But any, they could simply make a check out to the Carver Educational Foundation.
I just figured someone, someone else that saw Madeline and maybe was inspired to do the same would be an avenue for people to reach out.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Thank you. So our other introduction is we'd like to introduce the new teachers within the district to the school committee this evening. Traditionally, we've done that in September, but this year, that actually, our school committee actually coincided with open house at the elementary school. So we moved this off to October. And, and Mr. Schultz and Ms. Myssis are gonna come up to introduce the new faculty members in their building. But, and as they come up, I'd just like to say that, you know, my perspective is ultimately, as when I was the principal of Carver Middle High School, the hiring of staff was the most important job. It's probably the most important thing that an administrator does within the district. Because ultimately, our teachers are our foundation. The people that we have in the classroom are the key to educational success, and it's our job, it's our responsibility to hire the best teachers we can, support them, and hopefully build everybody's expertise so that our children have the best experiences. So this is, this is the most important thing we do, is hire these people. And I think it's appropriate we take two minutes and recognize them. And they're, they're an outstanding class. It's always an outstanding class, but this is an outstanding class of hires at Carver Middle High School and Carver Elementary School this year. So with that, I will turn it over to Mike Schultz and Ruby Myssis to introduce the staffs within their building.
It can, it can be a standing wave. You don't have to come up. We just, we just had our, we tried to do hair checks. That didn't work out too well.
Good evening, everyone. So I just wanted to say and reiterate what Mr. Neef just said about the hiring process. As I was thinking about this and thinking about our staff this evening, I must say that it's, yes, he's absolutely right. One of the most important jobs, if not the most important job, that I take very seriously. And we're actually very proud of the procedure that we have, the process that we use currently at the elementary school. We include teachers on our panel. We invite teachers to come and join us on the committee, and we spend some time really looking closely at, at what it is, what are the characteristics that we're looking for in a teacher. And it's a very healthy discussion, lots of dialogue that takes place with the committee. So just something that I'm very proud of. So I'm going to go ahead and start with Sean Allaire. Sean is our physical education teacher over at the elementary school. He's joined Mrs. Demarche. We're very happy to have him with us. He's a graduate from Plymouth State University. He's certified K through 12, physical ed. He did some student teaching both at elementary in Fairhaven and at the high school there. And he actually was in a long-term teaching position at Fairhaven, one of the Fairhaven Elementary School. And when I spoke with his, one of his references, you know, she said she was just in awe of the work that he did. He stepped into some pretty big shoes, and he did it with grace. And he came to us in, I believe it was later in May or early June, and actually, in the part of the hiring process, in some instances, we may have a candidate come and do a lesson with students. It just depends on, on, on sort of the process and what we're, what we need. And sometimes we can do that, sometimes we can't because the hiring is taking place in the summer. But regardless, he, he did a fabulous job with the students, and they responded very nicely to, to his instruction, and here he is with us. So welcome to Sean. Next is Caitlin Cronin, and Caitlin is right over there. Caitlin is our new fifth grade teacher, and we're very fortunate to have her. Caitlin is coming to us from a long-term position from Louise Conley Elementary. She was actually teaching fifth grade there. She has her elementary education degree, her elementary education minor is in psychology, and she's certified one through six. She is very excited to be with us, and we're very proud to have her. She's doing a fabulous job so far. Jordan Hardeman is not with us at this moment. She's maybe joining us later. Next is Jocelyn Kelly. Jocelyn is our fifth grade teacher also, and another fine young lady, actually, certified one through six. She's currently working on her master's from American International College. She's set to graduate in 2020. She actually worked with us at the elementary for about four years, right, Jocelyn? She was a paraprofessional in special education. Then we were fortunate to hire her as a long-term sub, and now she's with us in fifth grade. Next is Zach LeBlanc. Mr. LeBlanc is one of our special education teachers. He's not with us tonight either, but he's the liaison in, in fourth grade. Then Kate Moore, and Kate, hi Kate, good evening. She is our reading interventionist slash reading coach. And Kate has a master's in reading from Leslie University, and she also has completed her kegs from AIC. She comes to us with varied experiences with classroom teacher, special education teacher, and she was also an instructional coach. She brings lots of expertise to her position at the elementary school. And she was actually a recipient of a Fulbright Distinguished Award to study literacy in New Zealand. So she's sharing a lot of her knowledge with us, and we're very fortunate to have her as well. And then John Phipps is next, and John is our, one of our speech and language pathologists at the elementary. He joins Mrs. Abby Albin. He has his master's of science in communication, and he has quite, quite a nice resume of experience. He's worked both at the Boston Medical Center, he's worked at the Putting Stone Place in Middleborough. He actually was an English teacher in South Korea also for a couple of years. And one of the, one of the things that I had asked the teachers to do is to send me a quote for the newsletter about a month ago, and he said, you know, my quote is, "I love when those stu-, when students have those aha moments where concepts that they have been working on really just click, and that's what keeps me inspired." So thank you, John. And then Lindsay Swanton, she is not able to be with us tonight. She's actually working on her master's, so she's taking a course tonight. And then last but not least is Christine Thomas, and she is a fourth grade teacher. We're very fortunate to have Christine. She has her master's in elementary education from Curry College. She also worked with us at the elementary school in preschool. She was a preschool part-time teacher last year, and prior to that, she was working as a, she actually was working on her practicum, and she was in fourth grade working with Mrs. Steed and Mrs. Smith. So she's very eager, she's collaborative, she has a strong work ethic, and she joins a fabulous team of educators that we're very proud of.
Well, at the, at the middle high school, we have five new hires, and as the new principal, I did not get the memo about detailed intros, but I will do my best here.
I shortened mine a little bit.
So our first...
Can we skip her to the applause?
Yes. Please all stand. But our first, I would echo what Mr. Neef said, what Ruby has said, in terms of the hiring process, for each one of these people, they definitely came to the top of the process and have done a really nice job settling in with us. So first is Donna Vella. Donna is our new seventh grade English teacher on the new Phoenix team. I'll explain later. Bridgewater, she's a graduate of Bridgewater State University. This is her first year teaching, and we were fortunate to see her last year as a student internship at the middle high school with us. She's also had some experience teaching in Ecuador. So welcome, Donna. Next is Jillian Griffin. Jillian is our new chorus teacher, and she was hired the second day of our teacher orientation. So she really came in with limited time to get ready, but she's done a fantastic job. She comes to us from Bridgewater Rainham Schools, and she's got over 10 years' experience there in her, in the general music and chorus programs over there, and she's a graduate of Boston Conservatory. Next is Sarah Varneren. And Sarah is, went to undergrad at UMass Lowell, and she was part of a post-bachelor teacher license program at Bridgewater. She's in her third year teaching math, and she has worked, taught both sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in the Somerset and Fall River School districts. She's teaching pre-algebra and honors this year in grade eight. There are two people that aren't here with us. Mike Doyle. Mike Doyle is a new special ed teacher who is working in our CAP program, and he was also a long-term sub in the building last year with us, and has done a really nice job with our transfer of the, of the CAP program to Central Office. And then finally, Bonnie Moran. Bonnie's also not here, but Bonnie is our new school adjustment counselor, and she is in the graduate assistance program. And Bonnie comes from the private sector. She was a consultant with some schools, or six, old Rochester being one, and has transitioned into our building as an adjustment counselor in that program, done a really nice job. So we are definitely fortunate to have a great new five members of our staff and done a really nice job to start.
The only thing I'd like to add on is, and Ruby and Mike touched on it with some people, is that, you know, several of our new hires were employees for us in different capacities. So Jocelyn Kelly, bringing down the list, Jordan Hardeman, Christine Thomas, Michael Doyle, Donna did a student internship with us. So it was, it was nice to see that, you know, several members of our, some, some of our new teachers are coming from different roles in the district. So we love, we love their commitment to the Carver Schools.
Welcome.
Awesome.
Welcome. Moving on to comments from the general public. Anyone? Seeing none. We'll move on to comments on the EAPC.
Hi, everyone. For those people who don't know, I'm Tammy Johnson, the EAPC Carver Vice President. And also, I would like to concur that it's been great working with, alongside these, I would like to say young, but these new teachers, and we're so lucky to have them. To start off, I have some really good news. The Student Opportunity Act was passed at the Senate last Thursday, 39 to 0, which was fantastic. Not only was it passed, it also, we also kept the control to the local, local communities as opposed to being to the DUCY and Commissioner of Education, which is one of our goals, and we're very happy about that. 1.4 billion over seven years, and adopting recommendations from the Foundation Budget Review Commission. The, it's not over yet, as we all know. There's still the House we need to go to and the governor. So within the next couple of weeks, we're gonna be working really hard, and if anybody know, I know a lot of us have been, I'm not sure if you're aware, but making phone calls, talking to legislators. The EAPC, we had like 10 educators meet with three other House represent, district House representatives this week. It was a very positive conversation. We talked obviously about the Student Opportunity Act, but we also had an opportunity to talk about healthcare insurance and high-stakes testing and things, other things that educators that we, that at the table cared about. Moving on, as far as, you know, we do, are looking forward and working hard for this extra, the money, not extra money, the money that has been due to us, because the Foundation Budget Review has showed, we really, as the EAPC, feel very strongly that we are hoping, we want to recommend that the full-time carer, kindergarten paras, I was just combining two words, the kindergarten paras are the top of the list. We feel strongly that the, providing our children our early childhood education program with the strongest possible start to their journey through our, providing them the optimal chances for growth and development. And the other thing I'd like to comment on, we've been really hard at work within the last month, working on a new power evaluation tool. We had a, very fortunate that we had a committee put together with, so five paraprofessionals and administration to talk about our new evaluation committee, and we've had a lot of positive feedback from that, working, looking forward to meeting again about that. And we also had a workload committee meeting last night, and I really felt like that went really well, too. We really feel like we're being listened to, and we really appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Update by student council, captains council. About Morgan Campbell and Hayden Roach and Crystal Vincent?
Oh, I think Morgan's gonna go first and do student council, and then Hayden and CJ will come up and do soccer.
Okay.
I'm Morgan. I'm the president of student council at our school. So the month of September has consisted a lot of planning, meetings, and events for our council. At our first full council meeting, we had seven new members from freshmen to juniors. And this past Tuesday, the 28th, our executive board planned for the month of October from fundraisers at local restaurants and charity work. On October 31st, Halloween, students will dress up and donate to make a wish. And in order to increase participation from last year, the week before Halloween, we plan on asking teachers for donations over $5, and if the teachers donate, student council will decorate their door in a blue theme to advertise to students the importance of donating. This month, I attended president's dinner in Franklin, Massachusetts. And in this event, every student council president in Massachusetts come together to share ideas and to go back to their schools feeling empowered. And tomorrow, the executive board will get that experience at Officer Shop, where we'll focus on leadership skills and hear new events to bring back to Carver. Later this month, on October 25th, 16 students in our council will be attending a region-wide conference to get the same experience that the executive board does. And student council would also like to thank Mr. Schultz for the effort he has put into our group. Monthly meetings have started where we update him on what we have done and what we plan to do. Mr. Schultz will also be attending our first full, our second full council meeting this Tuesday and our region conference at Walpole High School on the 25th. His appearance in our council has helped tremendously because we feel the support from the staff behind the events we put on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Morgan.
Well done. Hayden and CJ, if you guys come up. For captains council, this year, we're doing something a little bit different, and we're having captains from each sports team rotate through each month. So these are our boys soccer captains.
Hello, I'm Hayden. Sports programs have reached the midpoint of the fall seasons, and boy soccer has already qualified for the tournament. And we're also still in the triple E band, winning with the field of fields by 5 o'clock. And we're still waiting for our first frost and playing it week to week. Really eager to play at night.
Open for a lot of night games soon. Captains council will again sponsor the girls' Powderpuff football games that we usually have every year in the month of November for grades nine to 12. And then all the proceeds that we make from that game will go to school-wide activities and other community service programs in the school.
Another community service program that we, we do often is we supply gifts to the Plymouth Area Coalition Holiday Fund. Last year, we gave over $2,000 in gifts from all the sports teams and captains. So each captain collected money from the team, and then we brought it all together and bought presents.
Very good.
And then also, another thing we do is the B and 11 program. So in order to introduce a lot of the students to the high school and like the different sports that we have, each grade seven student will participate in a day in March, I believe. And it's pretty much just a team-building day where we have different activities that strengthens the bonding between each other. And the purpose is to promote interest in sports and activities and to also build school pride among us. And then also new this year, we will be sponsoring Fit and Well Week, and the major focus on that is supporting healthy lifestyles through sports and nutrition. And we're also still developing the details on that because it hasn't been finalized yet, but that is our starting point, so.
Do you have a sense of when you're gonna do that? Do you know yet?
Not, we're not quite sure yet. We're hoping in the spring, when it starts to warm up, that way we can get some students outside and to get fit on the turf with our new turf field, so, yeah.
All right, any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Thanks for your time, guys.
Thanks for the updates. All right, move on to approval of minutes. So we have the joint meeting of the select board and the school committee Thursday, September 12th. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to accept the joint meeting of the select board and the school committee.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See, number three.
And we'd also make a motion to accept Thursday, September 12th, open session minutes.
Second.
Motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Communications.
Communications. I just wanted to make the committee aware. Good night, everybody.
Thank you for coming. Guys are about to miss the fun part. Come on. This is where it gets good, guys.
There's a lot of laughter out there for now.
So coming up, November 6th through 9th, which is a Wednesday through a Saturday, is the Mass Association of School Committees and Mass Association of School Superintendents Joint Conference. The conference is during the day, but I wanted to invite the members to attend. There is a link in the background which shows you all the events that are happening at the conference. I also have actually a handout if people wanted to take a look at that, if someone could take a copy of that as well. I know, I know based on your schedules, with some of our members being teachers, it's difficult to maybe attend conferences during the day, but wanted to give everybody the opportunity to do that, take a look at it. And if, if someone decides they want to go, just let myself or Gina know, and we will register you, and we'll make plans to head down.
Do they even put these on video for people that can't make it?
I do not believe they put them on video.
Just asking.
Yeah. So just making, making you aware, like I said, take a look at it. If you're interested, let me know.
Okay. Unfortunately, superintendent.
Just personnel updates since our last meeting. We've had a few new hires and a couple resignations. In terms of new hires, we have Paul Vavakwa, a bus driver for the middle high, for the district, Corinne Sherwood as a special education para at the middle high school, Haley Snow as a special education para pre-K, and Vanessa Koikinos as a food service worker. And we did have two resignations, Jessica Freiberg from Food Services and Judy Perry as a bus driver. And this time next, next up, please invite Jane Tenop. Jane's gonna show us an exciting new option we have in terms of technology at the elementary school. The elementary school's been able to purchase virtual and augmented reality devices. Jane's gonna be encouraging teachers to use these devices. So this, this is technology that any teacher in the building's been able to use. We have a classroom set of them, and Jane's gonna give us a demonstration on how it works. So we're gonna have to get the opt, take a little virtual reality tour today.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want Miss Chairman?
No, I'll shut up, sit, go ahead and talk.
Okay. Is there a focus on this?
Thank you.
You're pretty good, actually.
Okay.
I have some others.
Have you ever done one?
I have not.
I just ask you, don't press the silver button on the top.
What if we already pressed the silver button? I'm just kidding. I'm joking. I'm sorry, I'm kidding. I'm sorry.
Do you want?
So, you know, Jane, if you want to give us a little background on the devices, how we got them, what our folks have used them, then, then tell us when we're ready to go on our tour.
All right.
Everybody's already trying, though.
I know, they're fun. I, I am the technology media specialist at the elementary school, and I've been in this position now for my fourth, I think it's my fourth year. Before that, I've been a classroom teacher for the last 20 some odd years here in Carver, having started here 32 years ago and had returned. With the technology, and I know our budget has been stressed, that I wanted to make sure that we could bring more experiences for the students. So I've been using Donors Choose over the last four years. I've been able to add robots from Kodong mice for the littles to Ozabot bits, and we've had, we've had a couple of other grants through Masque of We Video Robots. So Donors Choose offered a Google Expedition cart of 30 of these with the Acer book that you see in my hand, plus a separate Wi-Fi connector. So it's not connected to our Wi-Fi, so the teachers are able to use it off, basically off the grid within the district. And it gives them virtual reality and augmented reality experiences so we can take the students on the trip. Currently, you're viewing Base Camp on Mount Everest. So that's what you're seeing. So through my device, I can actually have you all focus on wind horses, isn't it? Where the arrow points and directs you to what I'm going to talk about. So I can take you to all different areas and have the students focus. There's the western shoulder of Everest that we would climb up, and while you're looking at that, I can also change over to, I think this is the one I want, climbing Everest. It's a lot of fun, isn't it? I have some great pictures of the different students that I've, classrooms I've tested them with their hands up in the air trying to touch things. That's the summit that you would climb. It's a lot of fun, isn't it? I have some great pictures of the different students that I've, classrooms I've tested them with their hands up in the air trying to touch things. That's the summit that you would climb, and you're in a valley right now. You begin over here in the Valley of Silence, and you sweep around as you're moving around. Actually, you have great chairs. If you push away, you could actually go in a spiral. Yeah, and it's a very fun experience. And you take, and then you go up through, I believe it's called the Loates Peak, where it's one of the hardest and most jagged areas to climb.
Someone watching this on TV at home is thinking.
Now, I'm gonna actually interrupt that one, and I'm going to take you all to, if you give me a second, and we are going to go.
I can scratch that off the bucket list.
All right, you're now in Fiji. You're on, in the South Pacific. It has a rugged landscape with blue lagoons, and if you look carefully, you will see a whole gathering of bull sharks. And these sharks are thought to be the most dangerous species of shark because they are commonly aggressive and live near populated tropical shorelines. It's exciting. I've also taken the kids into a shark tank, and they've been able to move around the shark tank. And we can see the great white sharks, very similar to those that we're seeing off of Cape Cod during the summers. You're all so quiet. It is awesome. Yeah. Yep, we can go to, let's see, one more, and then we'll go to the Philippines, and we're going to see the white-tipped reef sharks. And you can see them there. And so you find that the kids are reaching out. The nice thing about this, Google has hundreds of these, and they go to all age ranges. They hit, each of these little lessons have about six or more points that the kids can go to. I like it that they don't have straps, so it's safety concerns, like the littles, I always have them sit on the floor. The older kids, I remind them, take them off if you think you're going to be moving.
You can take them down.
And you can take them down, and it's not stuck to your head. The other thing is, you can put it down, and you can actually, if you have a worksheet or a document that you want to do some records, like take an observation, write down what you're seeing. So there are lessons that can correspond with just about everything we do.
Do they have live-action ones?
That's the question the kids have been asking. Right now, the, these are more geared so that the teacher is interacting with the student. I am going to MasQ in a couple weeks, which the district is sending me, and there are several different seminars that they're having on VR and the experience. There's a company called Tess where we can download lessons. And there's also a company, a system called Poly where we can create our own. So we could actually make our own virtual reality of Carver and connect it to our local history.
I'm sure the town meeting one would be really.
We could do, to follow along that. It would be interesting.
Look, kids.
So, but there's also augmented reality, where you can put an object in the kid, in the space, and you can look closely to it. I can show you off of this one. I won't put it on the.
Oh, why not?
Glasses. Very quickly.
And in your background, I did put the list of all the available.
Yeah, there is, yeah.
You look at that list, it's pretty extensive. You can tie all kinds.
So this is just showing you that you can actually look at a T-Rex in three dimension.
Really?
Yeah, I don't know if it's gonna come through on your glasses. It might not at this point. Yeah, yeah.
It's like on the right and the left?
Yeah. It'd be, well, you'd have to open them up. You have to hit a button to turn it back to, instead of being the two screens, the one. But you can put these right in the classroom, and the kids can look at it. There's cells, there's bees, the whole, you know, all types of subjects. So, and this is not for me. The kids could say, we're gonna use it in the lab, and I'm like, no, this is for your teachers to take and use in the classroom and connect it to their, what they're already doing.
That's pretty cool.
Yes. I do have another Donors Choose out there that I'd like to kind of push. It's for breakout EDUs, which are like an escape room idea, based on different subjects. But instead of being a total, like, room experience, it's a box with clues that they use based on the subject area, and you have to unlock the box, the different types of locks to get to the big mystery and solve it.
That's cool.
So we have that going, but thank you.
Is this something?
Thank you.
Oh, good.
Oh, no. Would this be used in special ed, maybe?
Everybody can use it. Everybody, yeah.
I was just wondering if there was certain programs.
Yeah, I've used it with many of the inclusion classes, because I teach all of the students from pre-K up to five, and I've tested it now with two, three, four, and five. And all the kids had a very good experience with it.
Positive response.
Yes, yeah.
That's great.
Can I add one thing really quickly?
Yeah, cool.
So last week, Jane actually did a tutorial and trained me after school on it. And this particular feature, it's a little bit hard to leverage in this environment, but it was awesome because we were walking down the hallway, and we were able to put, like, a cone volcano in the middle of the hallway.
Tornado.
And a tornado.
Tornado, yeah.
Yeah, all these places that normally we wouldn't be able to go to. And as a kiddo, you can have this, you know, the augmented reality, and you can actually, like, go into a volcano and come out and walk around it, and you still see the lockers and you see the floor.
Wow.
But it is right in front of you, and everything's to scale. So it takes, like, you know, static images that you would typically see in a textbook and makes them three-dimensional and rotating, and it really just comes to life.
They could do that with actual mountains, actual volcanoes, like Diamond Head or Mountain of Tegu?
Yeah, there's, like, the whole list of what's out there is growing. There's a, they have their own spreadsheet, and they put the listing of exactly where it connects in curriculum, age group, the different parts.
You could see all the way around it?
Right, and you can, you don't have to, like, do, right, you don't have to do the whole topic. You can pick up the ones that match something you're covering.
Right, wow, that's exciting.
It is exciting.
So.
So it's fun to share.
I don't actually have a question. This isn't actually more towards Jane, because I don't think it would apply to what they're, what they're doing. But as an aside to your point where you said, I'll check that off my bucket list, they're doing studies in Silicon Valley, neurological studies, where there is parts where your brain, after a certain amount of time, can't necessarily distinguish the difference whether it was virtual or real and the action that you had. So that trip to, to the mountain may be convinced within your brain that it actually did occur.
You mean all those trainings?
Yeah. This is new coming out, but, but in Silicon Valley, it's been there for a mighty long time, and just some things that are out there, you know? As an aside, it's fantastic. I think this is awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
I think what you just, like, that last point you brought up to is really cool because it expands the options of what you're able to do with it as opposed to, and it's only gonna grow.
I have to give a shout out to our PTO because with the way this grant worked, it was about $9,500 for the entire thing. Google was going to match. So I had probably about four or five donors from the Carver community, because I did post it out there on some of the sites that they have. And the PTO stepped forward and came up with the rest. So, and Google matched us right in the middle. So that, we got it for half price.
Nice.
Yeah.
It's amazing what comes up. I mean, just back in the 80s, just as a quick aside, I saw a movie with Christopher Walken, I think, and Sandra, anyway, I forgot her name.
Yeah, one of those.
It was called, I think it was called Brainstorm or something like that, but it was a, it was a machine, something that they, a lab created. You put on these glasses and went and experienced like a roller coaster or something like that. You could play the tape back with something like this on and get the same exact experience.
Yeah.
Like the sound, the movement, everything. But, you know, it's like, you know, just technology catches up to things that come out. You think it's only gonna be fantasy.
Right.
You know?
I'd like to say thank you for being so proactive and helping bring these, these things in that are really moving the school forward and getting the kids involved in their future and what's, what's happening.
Yeah.
It's fantastic, so I really appreciate it.
We're all enjoying it.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Awesome.
We're all having a good time with education.
Well, you're giving teachers opportunities to do what they're being asked to do, which is to get into that next century of learning and, and the routes and the ways to be able to do that. So thank you very much for doing that.
Yes, thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane, thanks for your time as well.
Thank you.
What's this?
I'm not gonna touch it.
If someone was watching at home with the sound off.
It's gonna be on the head page of the, of the enterprise tomorrow, just all of it.
If people are sitting at home watching us with the sound off, come on, man.
Andy and Stephanie are.
Yeah, well, nobody's up here talking like that, buddy.
All right, now you have to make the enrollment report, as fun as that.
Yeah, I think that was the funnest part of the meeting.
I don't know.
I'm looking forward to lettering.
All right, enrollment report. So today, our goal is just to give you our official October 1 number and make comparison over the last couple of years. Next month, we'll do a more detailed report in terms of where all of our students are. We're still retrieving some of that data, so by October 1st, all schools have to report to the state their current enrollment. Then students, schools that have our students, Carver students, and other places like a Rising Tide or Sacred Heart, they have to report to us during the month of October that they have kids from our community. And then we put all that information together, and November, I'll give you a detailed report basically stating where every kid who lives in Carver goes to school. And then we'll compare that over time, compare those numbers to the past couple of years. So our enrollment this year is, is up a little bit from last year. So our, our official October 1 number is 1,597 students. Last year, our official October 1 number was 1,575 students. Two years ago, our official October 1st number was 1,596 students. So over a two-year period, we're plus one, after being down, you know, some students, some students last year. And I think that goes a little bit with some of our projections we've been having. Our projections were that we were gonna stabilize a little bit around that number of 1,600 students. Looking at our current populations in the district, I think that's a number we're gonna stay around. You know, depending on where we go in terms of growth of bringing other students in, or maybe having some students stay within the district. I know we've had a lot of conversation about, you know, changing some programming offerings and really working to have more students stay in Carver. So when we look at those number in November, we're gonna see that number of kids who live in Carver but don't go to school here. And some of our goals is to try to attract some of those students to stay here. But in general, I think population-wise, we're, this is, 1,600 is gonna be our number for a while unless we're able to bring some of those students back who are out, and we'll talk a little more of that in November. So that, so literally, this was, the purpose was to share the October 1 number and give a comparison for the last couple of years.
Okay.
With more detailed information to come in November.
Okay. AP and SAT score report.
Yep. Mr. Schultz.
No glasses?
Huh?
No glasses?
Not yet. I should, though, because this is blurry, but. So the SAT and AP scores, you're gonna see on this report where we were able to basically give you a, it's similar to last year's. It's a, it's a projection over five years for the AP scores. And then the SAT scores, if you wanna go to the SAT scores. The way that we figure this out, so basically, we take an average of all the tests that our students take. So from August of 2019 until, I guess you'd say July of 2000, I'm sorry, August of 2018 to July of 2019, our students took, participated in six exams. So what we do is we get a score report, we can print the score report per test, and then on that score report is a district score, a state score, and then a global score. And what we, what we kind of have to do to get these averages and to create this, this chart really, is to, is to take each one of those scores, so add up your, we added up the, the global score, the state, the state score, and the district score, and we took our averages. So that, that bar graph to the far right that says both is, demonstrates that when we add up all of our scores, we, the district is outperforming, technically outperforming the, the state and the global scores. In terms of our individual scores, what we have to do, we used to be able to get these reports from the SAT, and Mr. Neef could talk more about this, where you'd actually have to pay a fee to really break it down into, into multiple levels and get these reports. But for the purpose of this, I went through all of the scores for all the six exams. And what we have to do is actually identify those students who took the test more than, more than one time. And then ultimately, work through that to, to show that 94 students took the SATs last year. Several of them took them more than once, but with that 94, we pull out the, what they call the super score, and we actually have 94 scores, or 94 students with their scores. So I was able to then take their scores and calculate, again, percentages, adding up all the scores, dividing by a percentage. And that's how I came up with the, the graphs for the reading and writing, and then mathematics. Again, demonstrating that we're either, even with the state and the global scores are outperforming. So ultimately, I think in general, our SAT scores, and consistently over the years, have been higher than the state and global scores. So it's a really, it's a really positive thing for us. And the only piece I'd add, add on to that is to say that, you know, really that, historically, that's the benchmark, is the state scores. Historically, Massachusetts has the highest SAT scores in the country. And so if, so if our scores are at the state level above them, that's, that's really, those are really strong scores. And it is interesting, though, that this, these scores have been re-normed a couple of years ago. The scores are a little higher. And it's interesting that at least in this comparison, the state and the overall average is pretty similar in terms of overall scores. So I don't know if that will be a trend going on in the future, but historically, over time, generally Massachusetts scores are stronger than the national average, and we have the strongest scores in the state and the country. So if we can, if we're performing at or above the state level, that's a, that's a good place for us to be, and a good, and a good example of the end product for our students.
Very laudable.
Yeah.
Something to hang a hat on.
Yeah. And I think you'll see a lot of that, too, with some of the SAT scores, where the 10th grade scores are certainly outperforming. And again, those averages are, they're kinda hard for us to pull off of the information we get, because you're, you're taking the scores of six tests and you're averaging them out. But ultimately, I think the outcome is, is great.
Mike, you said there was a service that we could get more detailed information on. Do we subscribe to that now?
So in the past, that's, Mr. Neef could talk a little bit about that, we would pay a fee for them to break these down for us into multiple reports. In the past, actually, it was free. They used to give you, the College Board used to give you the, what they called their graduating senior report. Now they've made that a for-pay service. So we have, depending on how much, if we wanted to get that.
Official or not.
Right. But ultimately, we get, we get the kids, each kid that takes it, we get a printout of the kid, their overall score, and then each one of their scores. So we can, we can certainly get some information that way.
Bunch of the numbers.
Yeah, yeah. And the, and the reality is, there's a lot of information just that's out there in the public sector in terms of doing comparisons and looking at overall scores and individual state scores. A lot, there's a lot of information on DESI. The DESI information is actually just a year behind. So they, so I don't know if there's a need for us to get the, the college-bound report, but that's something we could definitely consider.
Well, I was just asking, you know, trust your.
Yeah, because the reality is, it is something that we used to get.
Consider that later.
And then the AP scores, I mean, we can just go through comparison from last year to this year. In 2019, we had 93 students take 161 AP exams, and 84 scores of three or higher, and basically 50% of our students scored three or higher. In comparison to last year, you know, I think it's kind of on par, just different-sized classes, some kids taking multiple tests, you know, I think there's a lot of variables that play into that. But overall, even looking back at 2017, we've been in the 52 to 58. I don't know if we've reached 60-plus or so, but in that, that range for the last several And then we can just go through a series of each one of the exams. There is, some of them are actually up and down, and some of them have a pretty consistent flow to them. This is the biology AP results. Middle high school is slightly below the global and state averages, coming in around 54 or so. Calculus traditionally, over the last couple of years, has done much higher than the, than the state average and the global average.[1777.12] Calculus traditionally, over the last couple of years, has done much higher than the state average and the global average. So, they're around 83% or so. Language and comp, they are, again, another one that sort of outperforms the state and the global numbers. This group had 19 students in the group, and they were 84.2%. The global was 54.2, and the state was 66.3. Again, these are percentage of students three or higher. Literature and comp, 33% of the group score, that was the schools. Global was 49.6, and the state was 62.6. That's one of those that, you know, dipped. And what we're doing with these scores, like any scores, is we're meeting with department chairs, and we're looking at the students that took the test, the curriculum, getting feedback from, you know, any type of ideas in which we could identify why the scores have dropped.
And just on literature comp, that is one where traditionally, we do really well historically. I don't know if we have an answer why last year was lower. Same teacher, same curriculum, hasn't changed, you know, so it just might be a cohort issue. But over time, that's one where we generally, if you looked at it over 10 years, that's one exam we usually perform, outperform the state. But last year, we did not.
Environmental science, the school's score was 53.3, global was 49.2, and the mass was 59.1. Again, it had a sort of a dip, and it's heading back in the right direction. European history is right in line with the global numbers, 58.3 was the school's score. A percentage, the global percentage was 58.1, and the state was a little higher, 67.5. Physics is one that we have traditionally, for some reason, but under the state and global average percentage. I think it was around, I don't have that one in front of me, I think it was around 18.3%. And again, I started, we started to look at this, and, you know, traditionally is a pretty hard test, is what I understand, and our students have not done well, or in terms of above the state or global average. And that's, again, it's one we're looking into. Psychology, our school, percentage of students three or higher was 60%, global was 64.5, and then the state was 69.5. So, again, that one's been either on-trend with them, or there was this point at which it went fairly high and then low, back to the average again. And then statistics, this one is, as a school, 33.3% of the students are three or higher. Global was 59.7, and the state was 63.3. And then our last one was US history, and 50% of the group, three or higher for the school, 53.6 global, and then 69.4 for the state. So, again, I think for our purposes, in terms of looking at the data and addressing it, we're obviously looking for trends. We're obviously meeting with department chairs and the teachers that are teaching these classes, and, you know, working through the curriculum and finding out where we can see things where the classes are... Again, it has to do with cohorts, it has to do with the students, it has to do with the number of kids taking the test, all that can skew the data.
The teachers do get some pretty detailed information in terms of the questions that the students did well on, questions that they struggled with. They tie that back to the curriculum, and then say, hey, this is an area where we struggled this year, so we gotta look to and improve that next year.
Anybody have any questions or comments, Mr. Schultz?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Lovely.
Look forward to future updates. 2019 MCAS scores were...
Meredith, Meredith's gonna take us through.
Thank you, Mike, for sharing that information. I just wanna start off by saying, it's always nice to have these two presentations together in the same month to remind us that when we look at this type of data, having multiple measures to be able to triangulate the data and look at different lenses really does help. So, you'll notice that these scores will be nestled particularly in grades 3 through 8, and then in 9th grade science and 10th grade. And then, obviously, what Mike shared tends to be more 10th grade, excuse me, more 11th and 12th grade. So, with that said, the objectives of doing this presentation tonight is to review the building and district results for MCAS, and to provide some comparison data as appropriate, and then to talk about the so what. So, based on this data, what are we planning to do in response to it? What sort of action will we be taking around improvement efforts and that sort of thing? So, big picture takeaways, these results were released at the end of September. September 24th is when the state put all of these online, and all of the information that I'll share tonight is available on a public website. And what we do is, we have the opportunity as an administrative team to go through these at kind of the 30,000-foot view, which I'll share with you in just a second. And then, as time goes on and more questions arise, we're able to drill down and get some very specific data that helps our building administrators and our department chairs and our instructional coaches work through some goals and some ideas on how to make some improvements. So, the big picture takeaway is, I'll start with positive, is 8th grade science had the best achievement in its history, and we're excited about that. Historically, we've been working on improving those scores, including adopting a middle school integrated science program called CPUP. And so, it's nice to see the culmination of that payoff in these assessments. 10th grade did consistently well. As a side note, and I'll talk about it in just a second, this was the first year that 10th grade moved from a legacy MCAS to a next-generation MCAS. And then, lastly, the number of students that meet or exceed standards is below the state average, kind of across the board, with a few areas that shine in terms of being above the state average. So, those are the big picture takeaways, and then we'll get into some of the more detailed data. So, in terms of what content is being assessed, MCAS is driven, under the Massachusetts Ed Reform Act, to have very specific days, excuse me, grades tested and content areas tested. So, all students in grades 3 through 8 are assessed in English, Language Arts, and Math. And then, in science, at the 5th grade level, and that is looking at the culmination of all of their elementary school science experiences at 8th grade, so the culmination of their middle school experiences. And then, there is an assessment in high school, one for science, and then in 10th grade for English, Language Arts, and for math. And as I shared with the committee last year, the state went through a process of overhauling their assessments, and what they call the legacy MCAS is kind of the old-school MCAS. They noticed over time that we became very good at taking that test, and with the revamping of state standards, the idea was to make the test align with state standards and to respond to changes in learning science and assessment theory, and make sure that the test was measuring something that was a little more comprehensive than just multiple choice or writing. So, they wanted to give students new opportunities to show their understanding and their content acquisition by doing things like, there may be more than one right answer to this question, and if so, click them, or, you know, that sort of thing. So, it was a new way of doing that, or multi-step questions. So, a student had to do well on part A in order to do part B, or being able to take two different types of text and compare and contrast versus just reading a comprehension question and trying to select the best answer. So, it is a new approach to testing, and this is the first year that high school came on board with that next-generation test. A common question that we get has to do around the graduation requirement with MCAS or competency determination. And this year, the state has used a system to kind of keep the same level of competency determination so that those students can graduate, but they're gonna be going through a standard-setting process this next year. And Scott's laughing at me because they like to compare using this fancy term called equipercentile linking, and I can show you how they do that later. Alright.
Which I always think is funny, because it's a mathematical formula that determines how to compare two things that are not alike.
Right, apples and bananas.
I don't know how you create a, obviously, it's beyond me, maybe it shouldn't be, how you create a mathematical formula to compare things that are not alike. But that's what they use.
Right. Like that little meme that says, "Only in math do we buy 80 cantaloupes, and nobody asks why." So, alright, so with that stated, for people viewing this at home, I just wanted to share what a parent report looks like before we get into data. So, this is the example that the state gives in this situation. It's a math result, it shows that the student is exceeding expectations. There are four levels, exceeding being the highest, meeting expectations is the next one down, and then there's also partially meeting here in yellow, or not meeting expectations in red. The range goes from 440 points to 560 points each year, so that number stays consistent. It gives you some information, excuse me, about where the student is. It also, on that report, will give you information about how the school and district performed. In this case, we have one school per grade level for our district, and then also how we compare to the state. So, that information is all provided for parents. Additionally, they break it down so that there are some domains or some categories that a parent can look at, and they can look here and say, wow, my child did really, really well in numbers and operations base 10, but may need some more support in operations and algebraic thinking. They also have down in the bottom of the report, a website that you can go to if you want to look up what the questions are. Every year, they release about half of the questions that you can go in that they won't use again, and you can take a look at what your child is being assessed on, and then you can test yourself as well.
And parents should know that all of our score reports were mailed home this past Monday.
Thank you.
So, they should, parents should have those score reports. If not by today, they should have them really soon. And if for some reason, you get into next week and you don't have your score report, you should contact the school. Everybody should have gone this week.
Yes, thank you very much. We also, on the carver.org website, we have, under the Parents section, these links available if parents are interested in connecting or going out and looking at some of these pieces. So, I like to always include this in every presentation that I give around how data is used within our schools, so you've seen this from me before. But the idea is, throughout the year, we collect various forms of student data. Again, it's not just one measure, it's nice to be able to have different measures. And from there, we're able to identify strengths and to also look at areas where we may want to develop some instructional priorities or some opportunities for improvement. And then, depending on what those look like and how many measures we're using, we have coaching and PD available for teachers and some other action planning that goes on. And then, teachers implement those strategies in the classroom, there's another round of assessment, and the cycle continues. Ultimately, the idea is we want to experience increased student achievement or increased learning opportunities for kiddos independent of the measure. So, this applies for MCAS, for iReady, and really for anything that we're doing, school safety and that sort of thing. So, in terms of my data review, I'm gonna show you the achievement that we have in both schools and talk a little bit about growth, and then talk about some subgroups and how we are narrowing the gap with those subgroups and making sure that they have the opportunity to demonstrate achievement. And then, lastly, do our annual comparison to local districts to frame a little bit about where we are and put our scores in context. So, I'm gonna start with English, Language Arts, and this shows how students performed in grades 3 through 8, and then again in 10. And there are a couple of salient data points here that I wanna share. So, this first column right here shows how we did in Carver. And this is the percentage of students that were meeting, plus the percentage of students that were exceeding. That tends to be the litmus test that the state uses, and that's also what the state reports out. So, the state number for that same amount for meeting and exceeding is right next to this column. And you'll notice in green at the bottom, that's where we have exceeded the state. So, that would be in 8th grade and 10th grade. The third column over is average scaled score, so I showed you earlier that to meet expectations, we have to hit 500. And this shows you where we perform in that. And then, this last column talks about growth. And I've mentioned this before, but the way that that gets determined is independent of whether you were not meeting expectations or whether you were exceeding expectations. What the state does is it takes everybody that had the same score as you the year before and plots out what you got this year, and then comes up with a percentile according to that. And the idea is that in order to kind of meet the state mark, our student growth percentage needs to be at 50, and if it's above 50, I highlighted it in blue. So, moving on to math, we have those same columns and those same opportunities. The one thing that I do wanna point out is, sometimes it's easy for people to get hung up on one metric or another. So, it's easy to say, you know, I'm noticing that, you know, 7th grade math, for example, is below the state on meeting and exceeding. But if you look at their scaled score, it is below that 500 mark, but their growth is well above that. So, their growth is actually the highest in that 3 through 8th grade arena. And that just means that the students came in lower and they brought them further. So, it's really important for us to look at the full complexion of data and not just look at that average scaled score when we're looking at data. So, moving on, we'll talk about gap narrowing. So, this is where we're looking at performance in English, Language Arts, and math for a couple of our subgroups. So, anytime there's a sample size of 20 or greater, the state, I'm sorry, of 10 or greater, the state is able to pull out subgroup information. So, here we look at students with disabilities and our economically disadvantaged students to look at their growth, as well as where they perform in terms of their average scaled score. And then, I also included this column called the achievement percentile. And what that does is that takes students from around the state that are in that same subgroup and tells us where Carver is. For example, with English, Language Arts, if you take our elementary, so grade 3 through 5 students that are identified as having a disability, in English, Language Arts, they're in the 55th percentile, which means that they're achieving better than 55% of students with disabilities in the state. So, you can look at that data. And then, moving on to math, we have those same metrics, and this is for grades 6, 7, and 8. And how they perform in ELA on top and math on the bottom. And I will point out that at the middle school level, students with disabilities met that 50-growth target, that 50.4-growth target, which is great. So, talking about that achievement percentile, I just wanted to pull out that subgroup. So, we know that the test is gonna be difficult, particularly if students have a learning disability or something that may impede their ability to comprehend the text or what's being asked. So, I like to pull this piece out, it's a metric that we used last year to show how we're doing in terms of comparing this group to the state. So, this piece shows our English, Language Arts percentiles, and then on the next slide, our math percentiles. And that's by grade. And then, lastly, we're gonna do our comparison data, and I stayed true with what we've done in the past, where I have pulled out 5th, 8th, and 10th grade data for comparison rather than every grade level, primarily because 5th grade is the end of elementary school in our district, 8th grade is the end of middle school, and 10th grade is the last time that our students take the MCAS. So, Scott and I get together to identify area districts that are like us. You'll notice that we are located in kind of the cranberry color, and the state average is in the pale gray. So, this is 5th grade English, Language Arts. And 8th grade English, Language Arts. And then 10th grade English Language Arts. So nestled closer to that state average. And then moving on to math, fifth grade math. And eighth grade math. And lastly, 10th grade math. And then grade five, science. And grade eight, science. Which again, was that, that high achievement. And then 10th grade, science. 10th grade, science is a little bit hard to qualify. We have these scores, but in all actuality, you can take the test in ninth grade or in 10th grade. And we have our students taken in ninth grade because they take the physics test.
And in four different subjects.
Right.
Though most students do either biology and intro physics, you could take a science and technology exam or a chemistry exam.
Right.
So it's a little more, it's a tougher comparison because not everyone takes it at the exact same time.
Right. And some of these districts, they may administer in ninth grade or 10th grade. They may administer, like Scott said, biology or physics or one of the other two tests. So in terms of action steps, I just wanted to share with the public and share with the committee what we do with this data and how it impacts students. So to start off, our administrative team looks at the data kind of collectively and then breaks off into school groups and looks for trends in the data and shares that out in terms of action planning. So at the elementary level, our reading coach and our math coach ran data team meetings, all except for one grade level has met. And they review MCAS data along with other data that we have. So DIBELS for reading, iReady for math. And talk to teachers about what they're seeing in the classroom in the first six weeks of school to identify student strengths and then areas for improvement. It also gives teachers the opportunity with the coach to develop small instructional groups that are focused around identified need. And it allows them to work on developing interventions. The other thing that I wanted to mention is this year, we had talked about this with the school committee last spring. But this year, in grades three through five, we launched a teaming plan where there are two team teachers. One takes on math and science and the other one takes on English Language Arts and history, social science. And so it'll be interesting to see the impact on that when we get our MCAS scores next year. If you remember, one of the motivators behind that was to allow for some professional focus, given the vast number of different standards that elementary teachers have to cover. And I think at that point, when I presented that, we said third grade teachers have to cover 220 standards in a year. And so this is an opportunity to allow for that focus. We've also adopted a newly aligned curriculum resource that we talked about last spring, that Bridges Math Program. So the math programs that we were using and are using in some of the other grades are not well-aligned with the state average or with the state frameworks. And so using some resources through the DESE, we've been able to review that and have our math curriculum committee. And by and large, in meeting with teachers, they're very excited about the new math program. So I'll give you an update on that later on in the year. We also are monitoring the efficacy of interventions as students that will be getting extra support. We're gonna see how that's working and measure that in six-week increments. And then provides some in-time professional development through our coaches being there to support our teachers in the classroom on a day-to-day basis. At the middle high school department chairs worked to analyze the data. I met with a department chair the other day and their whole department looked at their results and picked out relative areas of strength and weakness in the MCAS and talked about some potential action steps. We also talk about the comprehension involved with reading these tests. Sometimes for students that might struggle on this test format or may get bored or may not take it seriously, particularly in math, it's easy to just like, take the two numbers and do something with them. And so we talk about some strategies around making sure that students understand the vocabulary of testing. We also are conducting an item analysis of the tests. And there is a new feature this year that department chairs are able to access and administration is able to access from the DESE where they can run reports that give the teacher data. So a teacher could say, I wanna see how last year my kiddos did. And it will show, you know, the average mean scaled score for that class and the average growth for that class and can give teachers the opportunity to reflect on what worked and what didn't work. Likewise, there are item analysis reports. And some of these are available for the public on the DESE website. There are others that are a little more specific that allow people to go in and see where we're above and below the state average and then to look for trends in that. For example, there were, we have some work to do on fractions. So that's one of the things that we can look at when we go through and look at these pieces. And then the last thing that I would like to end with is in working with the elementary instructional coaches and with those grade level teams, they definitely take this data to heart and react to it. I've had a couple of teachers that have emailed me and said, you know, I couldn't sleep last night or I've been thinking. And we've been trying to brainstorm some potential reasons as to why some of the grades are the way they are and then how to solve those problems. So one of the things that we talked about, particularly in third grade, and the state actually mentioned this as well, that last year, when third graders took the test, they noticed that about a third of the kids didn't answer the essay questions. And it was either something that was confusing to them or they just clicked right through or they put a letter and kind of moved on. So the state saw a huge increase in third grade scores this year because people were kind of focused in on that. They wanted to make sure that students were answering the questions and they did some training around that in the class. Likewise, one of the things that we were talking about at the third grade level is for those little kiddos, being able to do a math problem on a piece of paper and then transpose it into an equation editor online can be a challenge. And so we talked about maybe, you know, once every other week, just for five or 10 minutes, having kids get onto the equation editor and practice some of those skills so that we get a more valid read on where our students are at. So with that said, if you have any questions, I would like to entertain those at this point. And then just remind folks that if they go to carver.org under Parents and Families, they're able to connect to a variety of resources around what your child is learning each year according to the state and can be helpful during the upcoming parent-teacher conferences that we have next week and the week after.
Thank you, Meredith. Anybody have any questions, concerns for Meredith?
Our question. You mentioned fractions as an area concern. Was there anything else that was glaring? Maybe not specifically grade levels, but in elementary school, you noticed blank or the middle high school, you noticed, you know, open responses or anything like that? Was there anything else that was glaring?
So we do always look at what type of question is being asked, whether it's a multiple choice question or whether it's a constructed response where students may have difficulty expressing in writing. And so we're still in the process of running through that at the middle high school in terms of the math and ELA departments. But in science, what was interesting is they noticed in eighth grade that a relative area of weakness was waves. They noticed in ninth grade physics that a relative area of strength was waves. So it could be accessed to the curriculum in the sense that waves are covered. It's a huge aspect of physical science. And obviously, they hit it hard in ninth grade. In addition to fractions, number sense and operations and algebraic thinking is something that we're continuing to strengthen at the elementary level and is one of the key bits of feedback that we've received so far from K1 and 2 with the new Bridges program, that they're pretty amazed at what students are able to do and it's only October. So that's been great. In terms of reading and writing, Kate, who happens to be in our audience tonight as a new teacher, she is our reading coach. And she shares, shared out based on some feedback that teachers gave her when we were going through item analysis, some rubrics that are aligned with the MCAS that teachers can use so that when they do writing prompts, they're able to kind of give students some critical feedback around ways that they might wanna be more expressive or ways that they want, may want to cite evidence and that sort of thing. So working on our writing conventions and our ability to write in those areas are all part of what we're trying to do.
Perfect. Thank you.
Meredith, just quickly, on the, one thing that concerns me, maybe you can give me a little more detail on it, is the ELA for wide swings in scores of grade five, eight, and 10. Grade, grade eight did, you know, much better towards the top percentile. But why the big, the large swings that are going back towards the bottom and the 10th?
So one of the challenges with reporting out just at the end of fifth grade, the end of eighth grade, and the end of 10th grade is we're getting a snapshot of a certain cohort of students. And the year before, it may have been either a stronger cohort or a weaker cohort. So it's not uncommon for us when we're comparing like last year's eighth grade to this year's eighth grade, to see some of that, some of that swing. The idea would be to look at kind of longitudinal trends. And maybe something that I wanna incorporate in next year's presentation is to look at, how has eighth grade done over a three, you know, a three-year span? Or something to that general effect. It was something that came up when we were analyzing elementary scores because one grade level in particular had kind of always been very high. And then this year, didn't do quite as well. And we had conversations even in terms of readiness and some of the challenges unrelated maybe to academics that students are experiencing and that teachers are confronted with every day. So some of the things related to organization or to making sure that students feel safe and secure and that they're functioning at their highest. So even little things like sleep and eating breakfast can really play into this.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I'd also like to say, eighth grade, science, the increase there was very good to see. It's been a concern for us the last few years.
Yeah.
It was very inspiring. Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Meredith.
Thank you.
All right. Upcoming events. So just as we've talked about each month, we just give the committee in the background major events that are occurring at both schools for the next, between this meeting and our next meeting. So that's there for everybody. And we'll share that out with Catherine Gallerati in the paper in trying to promote what's happening within the schools, which we're doing in a number of ways.
Okay.
Zombies.
One more, the request to recycle?
Yes.
So we have, we have two requests to recycle this evening. One is everyday math materials. The other is some technology items. As we said, we've switched over from, from the everyday math curriculum to the Bridges math curriculum in grades K1 through 2. And so this is actually disposé of those everyday math materials, K1, K through 2. We were able to sell a larger number of textbooks back that will be purchased by Fallot. So there is a, what company is willing to buy some of that stuff back because other districts are looking for those materials. So we have a list here of those math materials. And then the technology items, same thing. These are just items that are either outdated or no longer functioning. We have made attempts on some of these things to see if they can be repurposed in a different way. Because I know the committee's always asked about that. Is there, is there other ways we can do this? Are there other groups that are willing to take this? Obviously, we're a district-wide technology committee. So we have a district-wide technology through our technology department. So they're looking at the whole town of Carver because they're supporting the whole town of Carver. So in terms of these items, they're saying, can any of these items be used within our own town resources? Because they are, it's a townwide committee, a townwide group. And then a couple of these things, like, for example, we had some obsolete iPad cuts. We actually tried to reach out to smaller districts to see if they'd be interested in purchasing some of them. So we, before these things got on the recycling list, we looked at other options besides just having them be recycled or disposed of.
Excellent.